I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Post Falls for March 30th. Order, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Some of you have been with us previously, so welcome to Hour Two. We'll go ahead and start with rule call.
Sorry, Stephenson?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Kimball?
Here.
All right. Any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
I do believe we have ceremony announcement, appointment, and/or presentation.
Yes, we're here to welcome Kevin Ward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He represents the small business community here in the City of Post Falls, and greatly appreciate him being on here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Excellent. Any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
Correct. Then we'll go to consent calendar, Mr. Manley.
Yeah, Item A is the meeting minutes from 3/9/2001. 2021, Item B is the reasoned decision, the Solomon Foundation Special Use Permit, used for 2020. Item C is the reasoned decision for St. Joseph Foundation Special Use Permit, file number U.S.E. 1-2021. Item D is the reasoned decision, a corporate park zone change, file number RZNE 2-2021. And Item E is the reasoned decision, North Shore District Subdivision and PUD, file number SUBD 1-2021 and PUD 1-2021.
Commissioners, hopefully you had an opportunity to look through everything. Unless there's questions, I'd entertain a motion. I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Ward?
abstained.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. All right. Next item this evening is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that will not be on this evening's agenda. Comments on issues that are part of planned future meetings, we ask that you would hold until then. We do have one individual wishing to speak tonight, that is Mr. Howard Burns. Mr. Burns, please come, state your name and address.
Good evening, Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court, Post Falls. A number of quick items to bring to your attention, especially with a new member on the board, that I hope in future meetings we'll get discussion here. The first is in the general plan, land use, there's a topic or a comment, they're, whatever it is, it says it's a transitional zone. But there's no definition of transitional zone. And you had the Tullamore vistas in front of you a few weeks ago, on an RM zone, huge project, 20 acres with little tiny lots, in what is shown on the map as a transitional zone. That does not, to me, mean transitional. Transitional, to me, in my mind, when I looked at it, it was going from urban density to suburban and smaller. That's what transition means to me. So you need to define transitional for the population, so we know what transitional means. We shouldn't see an RM zone on transitional land. Secondly, projects, it was just a meeting here, you're talking about the lack of housing, the rentals and all the rest of it. And yet, we see articles in the paper on Airbnb, short-term rentals, people buying houses for rental, they're not buying houses to live in. So you ought to be insisting that developers of PUDs, projects that are meant to be resident occupied houses, insist that as part of the development agreement, the CCNRs preclude rentals of less than 90 days. Put it in the CCNRs, make it binding, there's something to enforce. Last but not least, we have a bond coming up. Now there's going to be two of them. There was going to be just the fire bond, now it's try again on the school bond and the fire bond. And taxpayers are going to look at this and say, wait, you want to hit me twice? And you are hitting me twice because the school bond already failed. The fire bond, all well and good, 24 bucks per 100,000, and it's probably going to go down, and we all need it. There's no question, the growth has happened, and it needs to be paid for. But you need to have a fire impact fee on the ballot, on, in place before that, so that I can vote for it. Because if you don't have a fire impact fee in place to take care of future growth, I'm not voting for the fire bond. And I can't say that anybody else should, because future growth is not going to pay for it. It's going to be the homeowners that are here now that are paying for that later. They're going to come back for a second bond and a third bond, because you haven't put a fire impact fee in place. It says safety in the fee, that's all police. You need a fire impact fee on all new growth in this city, an extra fee. And if that means that a developer gets money to donate, quote-unquote, a fire station, it comes out of the fees, then so be it. But the fire impact fee needs to be put in place before that election in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. John, do we have any unfinished or old business?
There is none.
Okay, then that would take us to the public hearings. We'll go ahead and start with the first one, which is Black Stallion Ranch Zone Change. We'll open it up.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls. I'm here tonight to introduce you to the Black Stallion Ranch Zone Change. The City of Post Falls Planning Department is the applicant, on behalf of the Black Stallion Ranch homeowners. The requested action tonight is to rezone approximately 10.7 acres from single-family residential suburban, or R1S, to the requested single-family residential R1 zoning designation, as well as terminate an existing PUD for Prairie Ranch Black Stallion, which was approved under permit number PUD 0509 back in 2005. So, history of this project, as I just mentioned, it was applied for in 2005. At the time of the application proposal, the narrative stated that it would be R1S zoning with allowable R1 zoning setback requirements. However, somehow, when the PUD was approved, the language that said that this would be R1 zoning setbacks was left out of that narrative. And what was approved was just an R1S PUD, and the language for the zoning setbacks was, "Front yard setback will be 42 feet from the property line, along with open space, or, and the open space, and a 20-foot setback from the property line adjacent to Hannah Street." So, typical R1 setback, front is 20 feet, here it's 42. Flanking street is typically 15 feet, and it was approved with a 20-foot setback. So, that is why we're here tonight. As the subdivision was built out, with that confusion of the R1 language being left out, it was implemented differently over time by different planners and just inconsistently from that confusion. So with the current R1S zoning, Lot 5, Block 2 is currently the only undeveloped lot, which is right here. With the current R1S zoning and PUD, the building envelope is about 8,415 square feet. With the proposed zoning and terminated PUD, the building envelope would increase to 11,289 square feet. So, that difference there is 2,874 square foot. Location of the project is north of Pole Line Avenue and west of Chase. Existing conditions, it's built out with single-family homes, with exception to the Lot 5, Block 2, which has been purchased, and the property owner plans to build on it once the rezoning is completed. No physical significant topology or vegetation that would hinder further development of the site. East Green Acres Irrigation District is the water provider, and City of Post Falls is the sewer provider. The surroundings, zoning for this site, surrounded by mostly R1. So, Country Meadows Subdivision is to the north, Montrose First Edition to the south, those are both R1. Montrose does have a PUD that you're all familiar with. Cootney County, adjacent to the east, which is agricultural suburban zoning with a two-acre minimum lot size, that piece is about 5.3 acres. Berkshire Place was recently approved to the west with R1 zoning. And then you can see the purple smart zoning further to the east there. That is Northern Plains at the top with R1, and then Northern Plains First and Second, those are SC3. And Micah Acres is the SC4 properties, there's two there. This is just the aerial, you can see that with all those R1s and even the smart code, they're all built out with single-family homes. Even the Cootney County property is a single-family home with some agricultural use also. Staff looks at six zone change criteria, the first being that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. Here you can see that the future land use map calls this area out as low-density residential. Everything within the vicinity is also low-density residential, and R1 is one of the implementing zoning districts. Zone changes should be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan, that is outlined in the staff report extensively. Zoning should also be assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. As mentioned, Pole Line is the cross street there, that is a minor arterial and has adequate circulation and access. Water and sewer services are already installed, because it's a built-out subdivision. And the site contains no geographic or natural features that would prevent further development. The third zone change criteria is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with a higher road classification. This zone change criteria is not applicable, because they are not asking for commercial or high-density. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. The site's located over a mile north of Mullen Avenue, and is one of the lower urban, has a lower intensity of urban activity. And then lastly, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. That's not applicable, because they did not ask for industrial zoning, and none of the properties in the vicinity have industrial zoning. This is the list of agencies that were notified to make comment on the proposed development of that. Post Falls Highway District was neutral, and Cootney County Fire and Rescue was neutral. I can take any questions.
So this is, this is currently R1S?
Correct.
But are any of those homes on one-acre sites in that?
They're not, they're all roughly half an acre.
Okay, so this, so it was an R1S with a PUD?
Yes, for basically the bulk emplacement standards of our R1 zone.
Okay, and then I have one more question. When, so there's an aerial map that, well, yeah, okay, it's similar to that, but, okay, so what, outside of the red, I'm showing that there's green, it's where the, where the road comes out, it's, it comes out of the development, it comes out of the development in the red, and it's going at what it looks like to an empty cul-de-sac. There's an empty parcel right next to it, but it looks like the road, right there, yeah, 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 now, yeah, follow it along, the other way.
Oh.
The other way, there you go. So there's nothing there?
It's actually the Berkshire Place subdivision, so it's currently being developed.
Okay, it is, but it has nothing to do with this development, and what's that zoned?
That is zoned R1.
R1, okay.
I can go back to the zoning map right here. So, the hashed, hatched pattern is the subject property, and then that yellow property to the west is the Berkshire Place.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with this one, other than it's just adjacent to it?
The only relativity it has to it is that that was Black Stallion First Edition, and it was just lots 1 and 2, and then it has been further subdivided into Berkshire Place.
Okay, okay.
I have a, I just had a quick question too. I know with the PUD overlay, the 10% open space was required. It says in the, in my information here that that was not implemented. Was that because it was left out of the wording, or did the developer decide, no, I'm not going to do that, and just not?
I can just take a guess at that, because I was not here in 2005. It was included in the language of the PUD, however, it was not developed that way, and I, I can only guess at reasons why. You know, it's speculation at this point, but they're, you know, they, they have walking paths here on the front property lines that are not seen typically through your subdivision. They've got the curvilinear walkways and wider swales in the front. They may have been making an attempt at that open space, but I don't think it equates to the 10% that's required.
So doing this change would get them out of that requirement completely?
Correct.
And that's the only advantage?
No, the advantage right now is that these lots have restrictive setbacks, so, actually, I've got a slide of it at the very end here.
A quick comment, they're not getting out of the 10%, it's 10% that's never going to be attained.
It was never developed, and at this point, this, the entire subdivision, with exception to one lot, is built out.
And Laura was correct, I believe there's an interpretation of those meandering trails and that widened gap between the curb and that sidewalk as being the quantitative equality of getting 10%, although the documents don't necessarily clearly delineate that as being the case, which Laura alluded to. So, yeah, it's more or less a R1 subdivision with large lots currently.
Okay.
Yeah, so the advantage here, the R1S setbacks, with the exception to the front and the flanking street, which were mentioned in the PUD, the other setbacks are not determined within the language of the PUD, so they are stuck with a front setback of the 42 feet, rear setback of 15, and interior side setback of 15. By going to the R1, it's going to clean up the language from the PUD and the zoning that does not meet the R1S standards as is, so that the rear setback's 10 feet, and interior side 5 feet, and front 15 feet.
So are the setbacks on what is already there, following the, which, which zoning are they following?
Neither. Well, I mean, they're, they're currently not meeting the PUD requirement of 42 feet for the front. By rezoning it as R1, they will meet the 15-foot for structures, most of them, and the 20-foot for driveways. There is a 20, I can bring up the plat again, but you probably won't be able to read it. There is a 22-foot easement along Ashraff Road on both sides of the street, so of course the structure can't be within that 22-foot easement. So they have to be back at least that far. The other advantage is, a lot of the property owners would like accessory structures. With the R1 setbacks, they can only have, excuse me, let's see. Their lot coverage would only allow them for 25% lot coverage on a half-acre lot with those restrictive setbacks. By going to R1, they can have 40% lot coverage, which would allow them to have detached shops or garages.
It looks like some of them already do.
Correct.
Several of them already do.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
We did deny one of the property owners the right to build a shop last year because of the confusion with these setbacks and PUD. We actually didn't know there was a PUD until recently, because it was under a different name, it was under Prairie Ranch, not Black Stallion. And so, while researching this project, we came across it and added to the confusion. So, the whole point of this zone change is to clean it, clean it up, make it a standard R1, simplify it for property owners and city staff.
And it's completely built out, except for the one lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's why you saw that high degree of participation in that, the residents sign off on the proposal.
Yeah.
These non-conforming issues, not in maybe this current market, but they can rear their head if they're looking for a conformance letter for zoning, for financing, and so by going to R1, it really would clean up all their lots for that purpose as well.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay, applicant?
City staff was the applicant.
There you go. Just thought I'd throw it out, see if anybody else wanted to share.
Do you want to end the nightmare?
You want to end the nightmare?
Public, public comment, any in favor?
We do, we have one, she, she's in Zoom, she doesn't want to speak, but she is in favor, just to make that note.
Okay, duly noted. Any neutral?
We do have another one that's in favor.
Oh, we do have another one that's in favor, okay. Okay, does not wish to speak in favor, Harland, is it, Sleniker? Slenker, sorry, I, I try, I try. I'm going to commit it to memory. Please approve the rezone on the already-developed properties, thank you. Any neutral?
None.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay. I'm assuming that staff has no need for rebuttal?
No need.
So at this point, I would open up to commissioners for questions. Any questions?
No.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close it out, because I saw you up on the screen, Ray. Do you have any thoughts?
I do. I think if this were an annexation today, we'd probably bring it in as R1. And I think doing this cleans everything up, makes things easier for staff, makes things very transparent for those people who own the properties, as well as those who might be buying them in the future. So I think it's just really more just housekeeping, and that's it.
Okay.
I agree.
Agree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if that would be the case, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Is this going to city council, or is this the final?
The zone change, yeah, would go to council.
Go to council, okay. Okay, I recommend to, for the city council approval of, with approval of Black Stallion Ranch Zone Change File Number RZNE-0002-2021, with the R1 zoning.
My second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right, so moved. That brings us to our second public hearing.
Real quick, I would also address the amendment to the PUD in terminating the existing PUD. So I'd just call for perhaps another motion and vote on that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that one. I move to terminate, or to, I guess it would be, move to approve the termination of the existing PUD over the subject property.
Second. Motion, a second, feels that cover?
Yeah.
Okay, call for a vote for this.
Hampi?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. All right. Now, we'll move on to the second public hearing of the evening. Go ahead and open up the Nicholson Commercial Center subdivision.
Good evening, Commissioners, Ethan Porter here, one of the planners of the city, here to present the Nicholson Commercial Center subdivision here tonight. The owners of this property is the Solomon Foundation, and the applicant is Olson Engineering. They are requesting approval to subdivide 13.77 acres into 11 commercial lots along Highway 41. Here you can see the subject property, hatched in red, it's south of East Horsehaven, East Horsehaven Avenue, north of East 16th Avenue, right along the western side of Highway 41. Looking at current land use over the site, you can see from the aerial, it was primarily vacant, there is a single-family home in the southeast corner that has been discussed and proposed to be demolished, so, single-family won't be there, it'll be a commercial lot, as you can, you'll see in the upcoming slides. Water provider for this site is Ross Point Water District, and the sewer will be provided by the City of Post Falls. Here, looking at the zoning map, you can see that it's along Highway 41 commercial corridor, so it is zoned as Community Commercial Services, CCS, surrounded by CCS as well. And you can see the R1 and R2 residential there to the south and west, further away. Looking at the proposed subdivision plan, you can see, here's how they have it laid out. I will mention it now, but I'll go into more detail in the upcoming slides, but lots, a 10 and 11, which are these two larger lots in the back here, are proposed to be duplex lots. The special use permit came through on March 9th that you guys reviewed and made a motion towards, so I will explain a little bit more on that in coming up in the upcoming slides, but this provides the layout of the street and everything that you see here. And I will caveat this with, it's not in your staff report, but we do, and the city staff, want to propose an additional condition onto this subdivision plan that, as you see in the red circle here, the street configuration is, connects to the west and to the public street right here. That is proposed condition to be constructed during this phase of the subdivision, rather than the upcoming duplex subdivision phase. So, we would include this condition to be that street being constructed during this subdivision, not at a later date for the duplex subdivision, as it's come, as it'll come down the pipeline in the later months, so. And the applicant can, again, explain, or the owner can explain a little bit more on that too, as he is aware of this. Looking kind of more at the context of the area, this will look familiar from the special use permit, that was presented on March 9th. You can see in the yellow, or, excuse me, the purple, the special use permit, those are the duplex lots, and south of that, you can see right there, that road connection to the school property, which is proposed. You have that food court, as well as Real Life Ministries Sports Complex in Fields. So this kind of gives you a general context of the area and how it's proposed to be developed. You can see the commercial lots along the east there, which is along Highway 41, and then the special use permit, like I mentioned earlier. Looking at the subdivision review criteria, we look at utilities and traffic. The water supply, like I said, is Ross Point Water District, they have, will be providing water to the site. The city's sewer capacity is adequate to take on this subdivision, and there are no proposed street issues for the layout and the configuration that has been presented through the proposed plan. It will meet standards within the transportation master plan as well. Looking at, also in the review criteria, we look at topographical conditions, there are no hazardous or topographical, topographical conditions that are presenting any issues on site. And then number five there, you can see that it's zoned as the proposed use, and it conforms to the requirements found within this code. Looking at the previous slide for the zoning map, it's all Community Commercial Services Looking at the previous slide for the zoning map, it's all community commercial services. So it does meet that conformity. Impact fees will cover subdivision review criteria six as parks and streets. As the building permits come through for these lots, those impact fees associated with those building permits will cover these, the developer or the community not bearing its fair share, or not bearing more than its fair share of cost to providing the services as well. So in a nutshell, that's basically all of it. You can see here the agencies that were routed to for comment and what were received back was Post Falls Police Department and the Highway District, both remaining neutral on the proposal. DEQ, the Department of Environmental Equality, or Quality, excuse me, remains neutral and they just have general comments during the construction time, you know, nuisances and odor and dust and so on and so forth. So I would like to entertain any questions you have at this time regarding this subdivision proposal.
Question for staff?
This, it says in here, under kind of the needing to be consistent with the transportation element, that it will, "Timing and extent of construction shall be coordinated with Highway 41 widening improvements." So what exactly does that mean?
I think that's primarily as they do frontage improvements along those commercial lots, they'll coordinate with ITD to make sure that, you know, the multi-use path gets in. And those frontage improvements, including trees, will also be put in place during that time in coordination with ITD as they widen it. So the developer, basically getting with ITD to make sure that timing is correct and what needs to go in is correct as well.
So it won't have, it doesn't have any bearing on the, the commercial, it being developed out prior to Highway 41 being completed?
Correct. This subdivision will trigger those frontage improvements, so they will have to be put in place first before actual lots become developed and building permits pulled. So.
But not, that doesn't have, like, is what I'm getting at is Highway 41 has, is stressed. So are we going to develop this out, the multifamily, the commercial, and have that coming right out onto Highway 41 as it is now? No signals, just on the 41? I mean, is...
Are you talking about like for the approaches and how access is?
Well, yeah, access. I mean, cars are going to have to come in and out.
Correct.
And basically, they're going to come in and out of those two streets.
I believe Rob Paulus is on as well. So if he wants to address that and kind of clear that up as well, I'll let him take it.
Okay.
Commissioner Hampi, members of the commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. The Highway 41 widening project from 12th Avenue north to Prairie is currently under construction. It started on Monday of this week. The schedule for the project is that they are going to be working on widening on the two new northbound lanes this summer. They may also be working on some of the temporary traffic signal work that will allow them to get the new permanent traffic signals in place in the construction year of 2022. Where we're standing right now, we did put in the language of needing to coordinate the work with ITD because we want to make sure that this project doesn't delay or impact or slow down the work on Highway 41. And really with where they're at in the process with this project, if it was to be approved for construction, they have to go through construction plan review, get construction improvement agreement, and they will be able on a very expedient schedule to get construction done this construction year. It's rather unlikely that we would see site plan reviews and all of the commercial, all the commercial lots, as well as the multifamily, all developed and in operation prior to Highway 41 being done in the late summer or early fall of 2022. Yes, some of that would be in operation and they would have those lots developed. But it is reasonable to believe off of ITD's current schedule and the way the project is moving forward with the contractor, that at the worst case, the temporary signal at 16th and Highway 41 would be in place. But by late summer of 2022, that signal should be in full operation.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. All access to the commercial will be from the back. It won't be from 41, right?
All the access to the lots is from the internal road. No direct access is allowed to Highway 41.
Okay.
Except from the, what will be a signalized intersection at 16th Avenue and then at Horse Haven Avenue, which will be a restricted three-quarter turn movement, which traffic from Highway 41 can make a left turn onto Horse Haven, and traffic on Horse Haven can only make a right turn onto Highway 41.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I do want to reiterate.
This has to do with condition number eight. Is Hope Avenue correct? Or should that be different?
That got carried over somehow onto the staff report and that should be struck out of there. That was a misnomer.
Okay, so it shouldn't be anything else. Just?
Just Horse Haven and 16th Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate as well as when you're making your motion tonight, just remember that proposal condition that staff recommended for tonight regarding that other street connection to the west.
What is that street called?
I don't think it has a name now, but it's just projected to show that's where that connection's going to be.
Genesis Road.
Genesis.
Genesis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll invite applicant up. That'd be condition nine.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have a whole lot to add to Ethan's presentation.
I was going to say, can you state, name an address for the record?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Jeremy Trizouli, Kathleen Avenue in Howser, Idaho.
Thank you.
We're within the appropriate zoning. The lot sizes are larger. The developer intends to develop these out as pad sites. The end user has not been identified yet. If approval of the subdivision, they'll go to market, try to attract as many national tenants, national buyers, regional added, bring some much needed additional commercial users to Post Falls to accommodate the increasing population. Again, we're not asking for any exemptions or any exceptions to adopted city code. I will add that the developer is basically dedicating the land for the internal right of way, which will be dedicated to the city of Post Falls as a public right of way. They're dedicating the land that is going to create connectivity that was a requirement for the, for the school to the west. An additional ingress, egress for that school was necessary. So it's being dedicated adjacent to the lots that you saw a few weeks ago that the special use permit was on. We're in constant communication with ITD regarding their improvements and how timing is going to work out. We have copies of their plans right now. Their radiuses coming off of 41 onto 16th and Horse Haven are going to tie into our frontage improvements. We've worked with them. If you see that little nub right up here, that is all dedicated ITD stormwater. So we're working with their engineers right now through a series of catch basins and piping to get their stormwater to that swale. That'll be constructed by the developer, the road. In addition to no access off of 41, I'll actually add that there's no access anywhere other than on Genesis Road. We weren't allowed access from 16th or Horse Haven. So all access is going to be off of approaches within that internal road that we'll be building, Genesis Road. And then in a few weeks, maybe a month, month and a half, we'll be back in front of you for the subdivision within the subdivision for the SUP that went a few weeks ago. So each one of these meetings, you guys are getting a little better picture of what's going on here and what we're trying to accomplish. And to be honest with you, that's, I'm here for any technical, specific questions that you guys have, but Ethan's done a great job. We're working closely with city staff. We're working closely with Kootenay Electric. We're working closely with Avista, the water district. I believe we're in full compliance with everything the city is asking us to do here. And a commercial subdivision along Highway 41, we believe, is desperately needed to add additional commercial users to the population. So I'm here for any questions if you have them.
Questions for applicant?
Thanks, sir.
Ray, are you good?
I got one quick question. Are you okay with the proposed additional condition that the city staff was proposing?
Yeah, Ethan and I spoke earlier and actually got Rob on the phone as well. We had already planned on building that road as part of this phase. Heck, we'd like to build all the roads, even within the duplex lots if we could, but we do have to go through the process and the noticing and all that sort of stuff. So, yeah, that was, that was a plan. One thing I will add is that in my conversation with Rob, we, we talked about some of their other conditions regarding driveway placement. And our next iteration of plans, we'll, we'll provide driveway placement. And he, in essence, verbally said, hey, some tweaks to those driveway placements when we get the final user worked out on these lots, within reason, some flexibility is going to be allowed within where we put those driveways. Because for this first phase, we're going to build this road. We're going to build the swales. We're going to build the sidewalks. We're going to have an idea of where the driveways will go. But honestly, the end user and their site plan and their site development is going to drive where those approaches go. So I think we're all speaking the same language as to how this is going to play out when, when the commercial site plans come, come forward for review. And then again, to kind of piggyback off on what they're saying about timing, our communication with ITD, we think our timing is going to line up really, really well here. We've got this season to build the road, get the subdivision done, get the covenants in place, get everything recorded. Then there will be negotiating with end users on these lots. Then those people will have to come with their commercial site plan, their building plans. We believe that the timing of ITD's improvements along 41 are going to line up with when users start actually occupying these lots. It's going to be, it's going to be very close. Any other questions?
The commercial lots are going to be built out then individually by the, whoever is going to build or have a business there?
I believe.
So they'll be all different?
It won't be all different. I guess I'm not fully following your question.
Each lot, commercial lot, is going to be built out by specifications for whoever is going to be on that property. I mean, whatever kind of business. I mean, they're not going to be all cookie cutter alike.
Oh, absolutely. And the developer is going to add in some covenants there, and the developer is ultimately going to have a say who purchases those. He wants a cohesive, attractive, he's not just going to let anybody go in there. He's got some end users that he's already starting to negotiate with, that he thinks are a good fit for here. I can't speak to that right now because those negotiations are ongoing. But, yeah, he wants a cohesive, attractive.
Some uniformity to the looks and that goes along.
I don't believe there'll be an architectural control committee because honestly, he's going after some national tenants, and those national tenants are going to determine what their building looks like, what their signage looks like and that sort of thing. So he's trying to work with what these end users and who these end users will be to create a cohesive development in here. And some of these lots may be bought by local builders that build a multi-tenant commercial space. Again, we referenced last time over in Hayden along Cornerstone, the several different users that are in there. I think we got a Discount Tire. Then there's like a three-unit commercial that's held by common ownership and then leased to the tenants. And we feel that's a, that's very much what this was modeled after.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Joe, if you're trying to get him to name drop who's coming in, he won't do it. Any other questions for applicant? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Public hearing comments. Those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
One.
Mr. Flowers, come on up.
Bob Flowers, good evening, folks. Been a while since I've been in front of you. I have no problem with most of this proposed development. Unfortunately, CCS seems to go hand in hand with special use permits, which suddenly multiplies the number of houses that suddenly get built on these CCS lots. Right now, Highway 41 that was brought up is a madhouse, and it's only going to get worse. I was talking to a gentleman I've known for close to 30 years that works for ITD just the other day. There's been another hangup on that project, about a four-month hangup because of material problems. But dumping more multifamily housing right next to Highway 41 right now is like dumping gasoline on a bonfire that's already gotten out of control. I don't believe that it has any place, well, you've seen some of the recent decisions of timing and how people are being basically told that right now, we need to get 41 done. We need to get it completed and then see where we're really at, at this point. Because at this, honestly, at this point, we don't know how many homes, businesses, apartment complexes have been already approved for a long Highway 41. Nobody seems to be able to get us a solid number for that. They just say they don't have the numbers in front of them right now. They'll get back to you. Well, so far, nobody gotten back to me. But I just don't believe that right now approving, I'm not sure how many duplexes was in that drawing. It appeared to me there's somewhere between 18, maybe 20, say two cars per. That's another 40 cars. They got any kids? Well, that's maybe three or four cars per unit. We don't need any more traffic on Highway 41 right now. It looks like it's a great development, but until 41 is done, we need to hold back on approving any more multifamily housing along 41. It just makes no sense putting any more homes there. That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Any rebuttal from the applicant?
Yes, my rebuttal would be to Mr. Flowers that you should have been here three weeks ago because the SUP for the multifamily was a hearing that was three weeks ago, and the subdivision, within the subdivision for the duplex lots, that will be in about six weeks.
Eight minutes, yeah.
This one is honestly for a commercial subdivision. We do have the SUP approval for what will be duplex lots. I couldn't agree with you more about timing. We believe we're going to nail the timing just about right with a signalized intersection at 16th, a three-quarter turn intersection at Horse Haven. And our communication with ITD is weakly on this project. So I guess my rebuttal is the comment doesn't really apply to the, to the request at hand.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Anyone else? Nope. Okay, going once, going twice? No? We'll go ahead and close. We'll go ahead and close it out. Vicky, I'll start with you. Any comment? Vicky?
Oh, Nancy? Me?
No.
Oh, okay, you were...
I was looking at the screen. I threw you off, sorry.
You did. Was he looking? No, I, I think that's good. I'd like to see the development start along 41 to get things moving there and also the continuation, which will be for the duplex. There would be a logical thing to go in there between commercial properties and then other type of non-residential uses on the other side. There's not hardly anything else you could put in there eventually, except for apartments. So, and I like that it's, I mean, I know that there's not gonna be any front entrance onto 41 from most anything along there. So I don't, and that, and that the light, it's gonna coincide with, hopefully with the lights going in and everything and help ease the traffic. So I think it's a good fit there.
James?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I like the business there. I think it's good. We need more of that in the city. And, you know, I think whether we develop or not develop 41 is just gonna be a mess and hopefully, you know, temporary signals will help mitigate some of that. But I don't think we should just totally hold off on development of everything. The businesses will come in and hopefully the timing does work out where everything gets developed over the next year or two and it works with 41, so I like it.
Okay. Kevin?
I think it seems to be a good fit from a perspective, local perspective, where we need to build that out. It's, it's gonna be something with the signalized on 16th and the three-quarter on Horse Haven, that'll control the traffic, and most of them will egress out through the neighborhoods towards schools and stuff, I would think, you know, or Walmart, just down. I think it's a good fit myself.
That's it?
I, I think, I think it's a good fit when Highway 41 is finished. That's been my concern for a couple of years now. I like it. I, I do have concerns about the timing and the traffic that it'll put out on the Highway 41, which, which already is, as I said, I feel really stressed. So overall, I, I do like it. I, I'm just worried about the, the, the Highway 41 improvements being completed in a, in, in or around the same time that, that this would be developed.
Ray?
So going back to the conditions or, and approval criteria, and looking through all of them, applicant has made the appropriate, well, the mental conditions. So I don't see any reason to not approve it with regards to, I know the Highway 41 stuff is a hot button item. I tend to agree with Rob that even, even if Highway 41 is delayed a little bit more, even though it's under construction, that at some point, this is going to dovetail very, very nicely into the completion of that project. So, you know, they've, they still gotta build roads, they gotta put sewer in, they gotta put water in, then they gotta go find a tenant, and then they gotta go get that tenant to decide that they wanna buy the property. Then that tenant has got to buy the property, design the site, get it approved through the city, get it approved through the water district and all the other storybook agencies. And then at some point, they have to build it and that takes time. And so depending on how big or what it is, at some point, I mean, there's definitely a lag there. So at some point, you know, I mean, are we splitting hairs? Is it, you know, one month, two months, is it about two months before, is it five months after? And I don't think it's fair to necessarily hold them up on, on a public works project that they have absolutely no control over. So it's under, it's funded, it's under construction. We all have to be patient with the state and let them do what they do, let them build it and keep on with business as usual.
I could not agree more. I think oftentimes when we see these things come across, the fear is if we approve it, it'll be built tomorrow, and that's certainly not the case. You look at some of the material costs that are coming up, I think you're gonna begin to see it slow even more as costs continue to go through the roof. Timing, I don't see it being an issue. So unless there's anything else that anyone else wants to add, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to rec, to approve subdivision SUBD 0002-2021, finding that they have met the criteria for subdivision as outlined in the staff report. Adopting subdivision conditions one through eight, changing, eliminating Hope Avenue from condition number eight and adding condition nine as presented by city staff to add that little stub street over to the school site.
Second. Got a motion, a second call for vote?
Hampi?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Sheffington?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
All right. Administrative, staff reports.
Done.
Commissioner comments, anything for the good of the order? Mr. Ward, welcome.
Thank you very much.
I would say before we adjourn, we had a couple of meetings today and I just wanna thank staff for the time and energy, some of the creative things you guys are putting forth, trying to manage what is the growth of this city, knowing that it's coming. So thank you. We greatly appreciate it. Unless anybody else has anything to add, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.